And our mission statement. The school district is a Menominee area by embracing the unique needs and using the strengths of our diverse community, is dedicated to preparing all students to become lifelong learners, caring individuals, and responsible citizens. We have a pretty short agenda tonight, but any proposed revisions. Having done, we'll get started. And our first item here is reviewing results from the 2023 survey.
Okay, so it's my pleasure to introduce Darren from School Perceptions. Darren has been the project manager for the community survey, and with that, I'll turn it over to Darren.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for having me. A little background about me, I actually lived in Menominee for two years. I got my master's in K-12 counseling at Doeystown. That was my pathway into education, led me to a position in Slinger, Wisconsin. Do you know where that is? It's kind of a bedroom community of Milwaukee. I worked for that district for 27 years as a counselor, elementary principal, high school principal, and then the last 10 years as superintendent. And so in Slinger, we were regular customers of School Perceptions. And after my 10 years of being superintendent, the owner of the company approached me and asked if I would be an employee for the company rather than a receiver of the survey results, helping districts with their surveys. That empowered me to make a big life change because I'm from Lake City, Minnesota. So this allows me to be more mobile and to be home, supporting my mother in her senior years, and be a better father. My son's in the Air Force Academy and he's traveling all over the world. So I did step away from my superintendent job, but I wanted to stay in education and I really believe in this company because we use them in Slinger all the time. We passed a $43 million referendum with their support. We even did a COVID survey. We did something in Slinger called COVID. I don't think it made it all the way to Menominee, but we had it in Slinger to help us determine how to open school back up and what that would look like. So I'm honored to be here tonight to help you with your questions that you're putting in front of the community, and I'll go forward with my presentation. So table of contents tonight, real quickly, I'll tell you about our company very briefly, and then we're going to dive right into your results, talk about who responded to the survey and what they told you within the survey results. So School Perceptions, the company's been in existence for 21 years. We have done over 10,000 staff, parent, and community, students and community surveys in all 50 states, based out of Slinger, Wisconsin, of all things. The owner was a parent at the school district where I worked, and we've helped over 900 districts with the referendum hiring process. In fact, after this fall, we've got 47 surveys out right now, so we'll eclipse 1,000 different districts that we've helped as of Christmas. And our whole job is not to sell referendums. So I took this position, and I had superintendents approach me at the WASB conference saying, "Oh, you're going to go work for Bill because you're going to sell referendums." No, we don't sell referendums. We do independent research on behalf of school boards and superintendents to help you determine what your community wants from you as community leaders. So we're not selling anything, we're just gathering information on your behalf so that you know how your community feels. This process was, what Joe elected to do is our most common survey, and that is the paper survey, where we mail a survey to every property owner in the school district. Some survey companies go with random sampling, that is absolutely statistically reliable. Our company philosophy is, we feel every citizen deserves to answer that survey and give you their opinion, and so that's the approach we take. Parents and staff were also emailed a survey, including staff that may not reside in the district, but we ask them for their opinion because we want your employees to know that their opinion matters too. And then later on, we'll talk about how we disaggregate that and only look at the data for those people that can vote, because you have some important decisions to make, and it's based on voter approval and what your voters want. One more thing I want to make clear, the survey has, each survey has a one-time usage code, so no one can stuff the ballot box for or against any question that we ask. Once the survey is taken, it can never be taken a second time. All right, so we're going to dive into Menominee's information right now. So your survey closed on the 6th of November. We turned it around in a very short order. It was out there for three weeks, but we needed to get this report together very quickly for you because if you do decide to write a resolution for a February vote, those deadlines are coming up very quickly. You had a very nice turnout. So there's a couple of benchmarks we look for as a company. You had 2,044 respondents, 930 took it via paper, which was interesting, because that's a little higher than we typically see. Our distribution is typically 70% virtual, 30% paper. You're just more in the 60/40 range, so your community seemed to embrace that idea of holding onto that and looking at it and filling it out by hand, which is great. It just keeps our owner's wife busy because she hand enters all the results for us, so this is a big project for her. Your response rate, because we sent out just under 12,000 surveys, your response rate was 17%. You may be asking yourself, is that a good response? Is that a bad response? That's exactly the company average. Typically land right at the 17% to 18% range. So very good number, very typical number. Just did a project for Highland, Wisconsin. If you know where Highland is, they had 45%, but they also only had 650 residents. So it really just depends on the community. We've also had some recently that were down around 11. So 17% is good. We find anything above 10 becomes very reliable. Once we hit 10, I remember not believing Bill back when we were trying to pass the referendum in Slinger, and I was tracking the results daily once we hit 10%. And truly, the data didn't move from 10 all the way up to 21% when we closed that. So 10% is a nice healthy cutoff. Also, 500 surveys returned is a number where we find all of a sudden the numbers flat and out, and it's very reliable. You're four times that. So your data that you're getting tonight is going to be very reliable. Plus or minus margin for error always up to 2.2%. That's based on a formula we use based on 2044 surveys. So moving forward, I'll tell you a little bit about who responded to the survey. Your age distribution, no surprise that about the three highest responding data points. 35 to 44-year-olds typically are always number one or number two, because those are, that's a parenting age. 45 to 54, also a parenting age. But typically in the community, the third largest group is almost always 65-plus. Those are your retirees, senior citizens living on a fixed income, and they are your most reliable voters. So we're thrilled to see that even though only 13% of Menominee is 65 and older, based on the 2020 census data, 31% of respondents were 65-plus. We love that because we want to know how they're feeling because they're going to show up and vote. And we have a process that I'll show you later on where we redistribute the different populations to give a projection of what the voter turnout will be, and more importantly, what the voter opinion will be.
Darren, I have a small question that I want to add.
Yeah?
I assume on the paper copy, some people said, "I don't want to give you my age," right, on the paper version. So some of these questions didn't get any response at all.
Right.
I don't remember how the electronic was, if it was forced, all forced fields or...
It wasn't forced.
So just as you go through it, if you know or if you would mention, is there any of these questions where the amount of respondents was significantly low compared to the total?
Oh, right. No, no. Particularly the most important ones, and that is how you feel about the question being asked, and what kind of support would you have for the referendum. Your most important question is, would you be willing to let your taxes go up a bit to give the school the opportunity to maintain all the programs? And you had strong numbers there. Some of this tells a story behind the scenes, but the most important one is that 4.25 million dollar question. So I'm glad you asked that. So also, 94% of the survey respondents said that their residence, 5% were no. And you had 1% that they weren't really sure whether their property was in the school district or not. They were honest about that. You may say, "Well, who's that 5%?" Again, that's staff. That would be open enrollment parents, or that would be property owners, but maybe they own a property and they get mail delivered to that property, but they don't reside there. Maybe it's Airbnb or something of that nature. All right. Also, and Joe and I went over some of this because I was curious to see how he felt about this data. We asked, "What municipality do you live in?" And 49% responded that they're in the city of Menominee, 16% town of Menominee, and then it kind of cascades down from there. And you'll seem to think that was a really good representation of where your populace resides as well. We do this because sometimes we put a question in front of a school board, there may be a municipality that just passed a very large levy increase for something going on in a town of or a village of, and boards need to be sensitive to that. So we can disaggregate your data by municipality if asked you. And then finally, this is a very important slide for you to look at. So we, 41% of respondents were parents. Now, we talk about correcting the data and adjusting it to give you a projected support level. That's one slide you'll want to think about. Only 25% of your community are parents. But parents responded at a 41% rate because they're concerned about their schools. They want to make sure that the programs and classes that they've grown accustomed to are still in place. And then again, 13% of the respondents were employees. Less than 1% of the Menominee school district are Menominee school district employees. So they don't move the needle on this at all, but we value them because these are the working conditions we're talking about. We've done a lot of capital improvement projects this fall where we're talking about remodeling this or building a new tech ed lab, things of that nature. We need the employees' opinion because if they're not behind the priorities, the school board is thinking about, no one is going to be. Same thing with us. So their opinion matters, but we really don't factor them into the data points where we project the vote because they're about eight tenths of any given community. Okay? But they're paying attention, and they respond to the survey in great number. All right. Ben, very important question for you regardless of what you decide to do after tonight. We asked a question, "How do you like to receive information from the school district?" The lighter blue bar is parents. 86% said, "Just send me an email." 54% they read Joe's newsletters, and 42% the website. So that really tells you how to let the parents know whatever you decide. The darker blue bar is your community, the non-parents, the non-staff. That is 75% of your community. They are the group that really needs to be behind whatever you decide because they're three out of four voters. They all work there, and they don't even have kids in the system, but their taxes are going to be impacted by what you're asking. So whatever you decide needs to have their support, and it sounds like the best way to reach them is to send out a district newsletter, to put it on the website, and then to a lesser extent, Facebook and the Duncom to use, or the O'Clair Leader Telegram. In some communities, the newspaper is the entire mouthpiece for the school district. I've had it as high as 86% for the non-parents, non-staff, where it's the newspaper. So we say, "Bring them, no one's a coffee," so they write the article accurately because that's how they hear everything at the school. All right, so then the background information. This is your survey. You saw this, I know you proofed it before we sent it out, but these are screenshots of what we did to educate the community about the survey. We told them there's some financial challenges. We educated them that the tax mill rate has been declining for many years, but we are asking them for a $4.2 million operational referendum to maintain classes, programming, and provide competitive salaries to keep a top-notch staff, which quite honestly, staffing all across the Midwest is the number one worry of school boards right now because talent pools in every field are shrinking and education is far from immune bet. These are some of the leanest times. My last hiring cycle in Slinger was spring of '22, and we went from years where we'd have 600 first-grade applicants, we had 16. I mean, it has really changed. So then we educated your taxpayers on the mill rate and showed that steady decline. And then we showed them that even if with the referendum passing, they would still be below by quite a bit, 21, 22 tax, you know, right? So here are your results. Don't worry too much about this slide because I'm going to try to simplify this for you, but this is a summary slide. So the dark blue are the staff. So if you look at the numbers, 50%, 34% of the staff said definitely yes or probably yes to the referendum. The lighter blue are your parents, 35 plus 25, so they're at a 60% support level. And then that powerful group that's on my computer is purple. We'll call it purple, but the 24% and the 22%, that's your non-parents, that's your non-staff. They are at a 46% support level. So we're going to just show you this a little differently. This summarizes, this is how your staff feels. We always start with the staff because again, the staff aren't on board with these big-time questions, and they're working through the system, then we got a real problem, but they clearly understand that funding is a concern. Then here are your parents, 60% support for the question. Something I want to point out right now, and we'll talk about this more, is the undecideds. Everything I talk to you about tonight does not take into account the undecideds. We leave them as undecided. Come February, if you put a resolution on the ballot, they're going to have to tip one way or the other. Typical numbers we see for undecideds are 11 to 12%. So parents are a little bit higher than that. Okay? But I'm going to show you the next slide. Non-parents, non-staff, and again, this is 75% of your community. 46% are saying, "You bet. That's what it takes to keep Menominee schools being Menominee schools. I'm on board." 30% are saying, "No." But 24% are not sure. That's the level what we typically see on our referendum surveys. So we're going to come back to that. So this is probably the most important slide of the night if we talk about projecting forward what our company would predict on your behalf if you were to take this to vote. So what we did, again, we weighted the yeses. So again, looking at that formula, of those people that said yes, 2.25 or 25%, that's the parents, said yes at a 60% rate. The other group, the non-parents, non-staff, which are 75% of your community, you had 46% yeses.
I have a question once I break down. So obviously, you're weighting this, it sounds like in your description, you're weighting these numbers based on, well, I guess that's my question. Is it on, I don't think it's on, is it on the number, is it matching in your previous surveys, actual voter results, or is it simply based on the population of these two populations?
Census distribution.
Because I guess the thing that strikes me about the different groups, I really lightly broke them down, is that you've got staff, you've got parents, we know how to contact those. The non-parents, non-staff, that was mailed out to property owners. The majority of the community is not property owners. Majority of the voting community is not property owners. So I'm curious how, in your experience, like, you know, the majority of people who rent and are still registered voters, right, how, are there, do these numbers tend to match what the general population does?
Yeah, they do because what we do is we use the district's mailing list, and we have used whatever the district used to mass mail to every resident.
Okay.
So that's how we reach them. So I mean, I believe renters would have gotten this, and people...
Okay, okay. So it's simply misinterpreted.
I talk about property owners and the value of property owners, but we honestly, residents, sometimes these get delivered to nursing homes and muggles, so...
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I was, in that case, I was misinterpreted, I'm sorry. I assumed it was property owners based on the description, but...
No, it was a good question, because I want you to be, you have some very important decisions to make, and I want you to be crystal clear on our methodology. Okay? So what we did is we used the yeses only and came up with a projection of right now, 49.5% are prepared to say yes. But here is a little company history. 16% of the parents are undecided, 24% of the non-parents, non-staff are undecided. There was a day, and this was prior to COVID, indefinitely prior to our last election cycle, where the company would have used one more factor in that formula to reject your number, we would have grabbed one-third, 33% of the undecideds, and pulled them to the side of yes. So just as an example, you would have grabbed just over 5% of the parents, and we would have grabbed 8% of the non-parents, non-staff, blended that formula together, and roughly added 7% to your number, and that number would have actually been 56.5% supporting the referendum. But post-COVID, that formula did not hold true for us. Cycle, the cycle of being able just to count on one-third of those undecideds did not hold true on the roughly 100 projects we've done post-COVID. So we met as a company. It's a very small company. Our owner, and there's only one other gentleman that does these presentations, like, we kind of huddled up and said, "You know, we don't want to give districts false hope, so to say, you're going to get one-third of the undecideds would be reckless on our behalf." Could you get 25%? Sure. You get 10%, that tips you to the side of yes. We just, we're just not sure. A, the economy, interest rates are up, there's just a lot going on with the economy and post-COVID. A lot of schools have been under fire. They hear about all the SIR money, all other factors took a toll on our predictions of using the undecideds at strictly one-third. So I'm not here tonight to say you'll get a third of them, but you will, I just can't say for sure. 1%? I wish I had a crystal ball.
Darren, tough question.
Yeah.
What kind of range, I'm sure you guys analyze the results after the vote. If it's not a third, what kind of range are you seeing? Are you ever seeing, you're not seeing 100% undecided go? No, are you?
No, no, we're not, no. Undecided, some of the undecideds come to the side of yes. There's been no consistency, Joe, that's the challenge. What it's dependent on is what else is going on in the community? We've had some communities where they got a reassessment between the survey and when they had to vote, and all of a sudden, their taxes went up. That took an entire project down where we thought you would have support. Our company's history, we have a 95% prediction accuracy rate in our 21 years. We're 98 for 98 in Minnesota. We've never been wrong in Minnesota. If we say it's going to pass, it's passed. If we say it's not going to pass, let's say this number is 42%, I'd be sitting here saying, "Probably need to reduce your amount because you'll never get enough undecideds to tip it to the level of support." We're not seeing any strict pattern. We're seeing some that are 15 this fall. We've seen some that are right on that 35% where they tipped to the side of yes. What also affects it is community reaction to the resolution. We had a district where a vote no committee formed and just stumbled all over town saying, "Don't you dare vote yes for this." And it got really nasty, and people just stayed home, or the no votes rose. But we've also had some districts where they have wonderful support and they have a yes committee, and then that's tipped it comfortably in favor of the school district. And so I think I have a sense about what kind of landscape you have here in talking to Joe. Hard for me to predict, but I would tell you, we've never seen 0% tipping to the side of yes. That's never happened. Probably the lowest we've ever seen is 10.
So you said that the one thing that's notable is the number of undecideds that we have, you can say a typical ratio.
Yeah.
Do you have either intuition or experience on what might be kind of root causes of that number of undecideds? Is it, you know, maybe, I mean, so one thing to tie in is, one thing that's kind of amusing about some of the responses is that, I don't think this will insult anyone in the room. Don't find news is basically a dead entity that hasn't really published news for at least a few years, honestly. I mean, I don't mean to say it dishonestly, I mean, like, it's just not present. And there's a whole group working on independent news in the area because there isn't a kind of a newspaper, right? And so I wonder if actually, you know, this percentage of people who are looking for information from sources like that, those sources actually don't exist, so there might not be that, they might just have a lack of information. And I wonder if, I'm kind of curious about that information landscape and what you think changes that ratio from community to community by the side versus undecided.
It's education. It's them having a good handle of why it's needed and why it's not, I thought. The survey outlined it very nicely, but it may mean a few more evenings for district leaders like Joe and this board just to get the message out. It may mean some Rotary meetings and some Lions meetings, things of that nature. Again, we had a question on our survey in Slinger that was 50/50, it's performing arts center. People are like, "That's a want, that's not a need." So they wanted to hear more, so they were 50/50. Took my show on the road, had held seven different listening sessions, explained to them all the ways we would use the facility, also explained to them that we were going to reduce the price a little bit, knowing that it was 50/50. Took the ballot cutting off, made it stadium-style, reduced it by a million five, and that was enough to tip it to 55/45. And it's just, again, those undecideds just needed to hear a bit more about why we are asking that question, or why this is going to be on the ballot. So that's, I think it's lacking information.
Excellent. Dave, I've been reflecting on that as well. I also wonder how much of it is that this is a surprise to people who haven't been watching more games or attending more games, part of it with the information vacancy. But another part of it is, our school district was doing so well financially for a number of years, and I think perhaps people didn't recognize that the state really stopped funding education during COVID and then created this big fiscal cliff. So we went from being in a pretty good financial position just three years ago to all of a sudden being in a situation where we need more revenue or we need to make major cuts, and the state really made some big changes on how education is funded in Wisconsin, and perhaps people, you know, just aren't aware of that yet. That could be part of the undecided piece.
The governor made this grand announcement that he just did funding increases for the next 400 years. Well, that wasn't true. We have districts where they got less money this year than last. Birchwood, we just had to do a project for them because they need an operational. Highland, they're getting less, not more. So, okay. While we were engaging with the community, we did ask them, and this is a critical question, "If you don't support the operational referendum, then where should the district cut balance budget?" Again, this is on a scale of 1 to 10, your true median being 5.5. So really, when we scan these areas and how the staff, parents, non-parents, non-staff feel, we're looking for anything approaching 5.5 or north of 5.5. As you can see, there is not, maybe the staff are like, "We could just use older textbooks for a little bit longer, delay the curriculum updates." See transportation, non-parents, non-staff, that's an easy one, just ride the bus a little bit longer, you know, no big deal. You know, technology upgrades, parents are saying, "Okay, we're pretty well-equipped. We can delay the Chromebook cycle for a couple of years. My kid can have an older Chromebook." Other than that, there's no support for anything. And it only goes down from there because we go from the highest, parents, non-parents, excuse me, non-parents, non-staff, far right and down, and it just decreases from there down to the twos.
We talked about this as an administrative team as well, and with the question about curriculum, if you could go back to that one. I think our staff recognizes that we have updated so many of our curriculums in the last five years that I think most of our curriculums are sitting in a very good place. Plus naturally, if you're a staff member and you've been teaching a curriculum and someone asks you, "Do you want to change what you've been teaching and everything?", it's not a real popular thing sometimes. So I'm not surprised to see that number, but I'm actually surprised it's as low as it is. I mean, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And so that's no budget cutting, or no areas are very popular for budget cutting. And as long as we're engaged with the community, this is a good opportunity to ask them, "How are they feeling about the school district?" We ask this on every survey we've ever given at the community level. So we have thousands of comparables, but the reality of it is, we just wanted to grab some information on how people are feeling in Menominee, and this is on a scale of 1 to 4 about delivering a high-quality education, keeping the public informed, managing funds, and building private community. And as you can see, again, it kind of depends on who reacts. Staff feel the best about things in the district, followed by the parents, which is hard to surprise because they're exposed to the system. And then to a lesser extent, non-parents, non-staff, they're kind of going by what they hear. The lowest scoring areas among the parents and non-parents, non-staff is managing funds appropriately, which again, that holds true with every survey we give. Rare is the district where they're saying, "I love how you're spending my tax dollars. You're doing a great job of spending my tax money." That's never the case.
And one feature before this question, it was laying out, you know, a financial difficulty that the district was facing. So it's not surprising that there's a negative response there because that's the situation that, you know, and not to say it's not appropriate, just that it keys people into that's the question that they're most concerned about at the moment.
Exactly, exactly. So the next slide, we just summarized that for you. So the next slide, we just summarized that for you. Percent, they gave you a three or a four in each of the categories. And then for the average score across all three of those groups, that gives you a little better synopsis of how all the groups feel in summary.
Are those numbers on slide 20? How do you, how do those look compared to other districts that you've seen?
I would say it's right in the, in the average range. Depending on the question, I would tell you that the, that the keeping the public informed score is a little lower for the non-parents, non-staff. And so I think that gives, honestly, we asked these for a reason. I think that gives you some guidance on if you're going to put four a resolution. And again, that's, we're not here to say you should or shouldn't. We're here to give you data so that you could decide. That, that 2.39 there might tell you that the non-parents, non-staff are going to need to go to the newsletter or to, to really understand this question. So that was good feedback. No, I would say right, right within the average. Good question. Then the closing question, and there's a reason we asked this too. Scale of zero to 10, how likely would you recommend the district or friend or candidate member? Reason we ask this is, A, gives you a sense of, I mean, what better compliment is there for a district? You say, go to that school, it's a great school. A couple of high points here. Again, your community would, given the opportunity to, to give you a non-answer, one in four is set neutral. They're not saying that they're in love with the district. They're also not saying they're unlikely. They just don't have an opinion. So we're seeing some themes here. They need more information before they can, before they, before they vote, whether it's February or April, whatever you decide, or if you even decided to put this to a vote, they need more information because they're not even sure how they feel about the district on this slide. Those that do have an opinion though, pretty top heavy. I'd love to see that, you know, you're at, you're at 41% give you an eight, nine, or 10. And we have found that there's a very high correlation between this score and referendum success. So the point where we're presenting it, national conference is on the correlation between resident satisfaction and referendums passing. As long as the referendum question from the ballot is in line with what they told you in the survey that they, they would support. If they like you and they do like you in Menominee, they're more fine to let their taxes go up. It's pretty simple. It's the emotional thing. If they're feeling good about the district and what the district's doing, they'll let their taxes go up. I just have to present a district where they're in the fours on this score. They're going to have a hard time getting their operational to pass because the community does not have a lot of respective job they're doing. So this is again where the stat comes in. They're a critical part of this because they're, they're the ones working with the kids every day, building principles and frontline staff. So this is how we wrap up every one of these presentations. We say, what did we learn? Well, we learned if held today, the operational referendum would be too close to call. But support is within the margin for error. And quite honestly, if you can get those undecideds to the, to the right side of things, you'd be in good shape. There was not support for any of the cost cutting measures, which again, that's a good sign. There are all kinds of areas where they felt like you could cut and they, they didn't care. That would be concerning. And then finally, the, as we talked about quite a bit tonight, I'm not sure, I need more information. It was much higher than normal, particularly with resident, non-staff, non-parents. And again, they represent three out of four of your voters. So that's the group. They're unsure and they need to be informed one way or the other. So that's the essence of my report, but I'm glad to take as many questions as the board has before we move on to your next agenda item.
I'd love to know if there's a little more demographic information about the undecided, non-staff, non-parents. Do they fall into a age range or a municipality breakdown?
I can absolutely provide that for you in the break. That's something that Joe and I can do. We can, I can just set up a Zoom call when he has time and we'll, we'll dive into that. Just the software we use is, is very user friendly. So we can just click a few buttons. I did give Joe rights to that, but I, I really pride myself on doing this work for busy superintendents and then trying to put that on our platter for him.
With that undecided number being so high, I'd love to know a little bit more about that.
100%.
Thank you.
Thanks for the question.
What else?
I had asked about this earlier and I think that Joe had said that he felt that like the survey comments aren't necessarily a reliable source of information, but I would be really interested to get some ideas about what there were themes that emerge or like a major, you know, breakdown of themes within that.
Yeah. And I would tell you, I went through every comment and I gave Joe access to all the comments. And the overriding, overarching themes are just cost of living, taxes are already too high, those kinds of things. If you give someone a keyboard or a pen for that matter, they, they get very courageous on letting you know exactly how they feel. And the reason we don't put the comments in here is because you're talking about, you got 2,044 respondents. You have, you know, a couple of hundreds that write comments and some of them write multiple comments and we don't know what we, it's an anonymous process because last thing we want is the district to be, to, to know these people are or for these people to feel like they can be identified. But they really, the gloves come off when it comes to the comments. Now particularly, we find the comments are very useful when it comes to a capital project. Maybe they'll say, I'm all about tech debt, but don't you dare put that out. If you jerk in the football field, sports gets enough money. You know, some of those things can be helpful. With yours, the yes or no, largely what they're going to do is they're just going to get the opportunity to criticize. And, and so by all means, if you, if you want me to, I can, I can create a summary on self-document. So if any board member that wants it, I can put those comments into a doc if you want to. I just warn you, be prepared to have a thick skin. The reason we don't present them as part of this is because they, they don't really provide any statistical guidance for you. They're just opinions. And oftentimes what happens is they're so hurtful because typically people tend to write a comment if they're mad. They, they, they take scores off track of the decision they've got to make. Right now, you've got to make a decision based on 2,044 people telling you whether they support this operational or not. The no's, why they feel no, there's value in that, but some of it can get so personal or so hurtful that it kind of almost distracts from the big picture decision here today. That's why actually Bill wrote a COVID survey from scratch for me back in 2020 when we were talking about opening because I got yelled at so much and so many nasty emails that we decided, let's write a, a survey, launch it to the community and give voice to all but 90% of the people that weren't writing me and that asked the emails. And actually we came back, we got an 88% response rate to that COVID survey. And they gave us really good guidance parameters on what was going in school in Slinger during a pandemic would really look like. And it was very different than all the nasty comments I was getting. The silent majority were sitting back saying, we trust you. Since you asked, why don't we do this? Why don't we do that? Followed this part of the health department guidance, but this health department guidance is reckless and over the top. It helped us open schools. I would say the same thing here. I wouldn't make your decision that based on any of the comments, use it on the data to silent majority that are right and mean things. Do it based on the people that said they vote yes or vote no and based on some educating, based on those undecideds. Your undecideds need more information from you. They just need, they need a informational campaign, it's a newsletter.
Two of the comments though, I have been working on a theme analysis for the board. And I think not only for referendum, but also for future strategic planning and for future work plans. But I can tell you that specific to the referendum, it's been really helpful for me to be able to identify some, some misconceptions and some concerns. You know, I think Darren hit on the head with affordability, you know, that, that is a concern that comes forward. But again, the comments are a very small percentage of the actual respondents, but it is a concern and it's most of, we all have concerns about affordability. The recurring piece, you know, some people have a concern with recurring. And again, that's not a surprise, but we appreciate people, you know, sharing that and I appreciate that. But then some of the misconceptions, for instance, and I, I know Mrs. Guy Hallaway was here on Monday and gave the report on co-curricular activities, spending and analysis. And some people think, for instance, that sports is like 50% of our budget. And, you know, we'll just cut sports or just cut, you know, fine arts or whatever, cut the, cut the clubs and that'll balance the budget. Well, board members, you all saw that on Monday. It's a tiny, tiny piece of our budget. You know, so I think some of those misconceptions, you know, when I get the theme analysis completed and able to share with the board, you'll be able to see some of those. But that'll also help inform us when we're sharing information with the community and those undecided people, you know, try to clear up some misconceptions and move forward in a productive way.
And you saw your data on transportation. I think the average taxpayer would be shocked at what a small line item. I mean, it doesn't feel that way when you're negotiating with a bus company, but the reality of it is, you know, a whole layer of all the things it takes around the district. Transportation, cut that back by 20% and still not going to move the needle on kind of financial challenges many districts in Wisconsin are having this year.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to make sure Angie had a chance to ask a question if she wants to.
I have one last question on the undecideds. So, you know, and that's 75, 25% breakdown you did. If I do that for the definitely or probably, the definitely or maybe no's, that ends up at 28, 25%? And so I'm curious, like I got a completely inner tanker saying about now being others, like the undecideds are undecided and they could swing either direction and they could be all sorts of turn breakdowns based on local and political context and all these things. I'm curious about like if I, if I leave that aside and say, we've got, you know, the, the proposed ratios you have for the maybe or definitely yes are 49.5, maybe or definitely no's are 28.5. That, is that difference relevant or do you think it really, the question really is in the undecideds?
Questions in the undecideds for sure. And, and quite honestly, I think I'm actually, in some ways, I'm kind of glad that you have so many people in the camp of undecideds rather than a hard no. As you see, human nature, if unsure, they'll just, they'll, they'll go to that right in the middle. That means that truly are unsure. Actually, Joe knows this, we don't give staff, when we ask staff, parents and students how they're feeling about their education, when we do our, that's another huge part of our business is those satisfaction surveys amongst staff, students or parents. We don't allow them to say they're unsure. Because people migrate to that, the water's down on the results. And we really want people either to answer the question, whether you have an opinion about it. And if you don't have an opinion about it, we just don't even count their answer because we want to make, we want Joe to have decisions about personnel programs for kids based on people that actually have an opinion. In this case, when you talk about finances, we, we do allow that. But again, I, I do feel fairly quite optimistic for Menominee because so many are in the undecided camp. I just can't believe you wouldn't even get 10, 15% and that would really swing you to that yes side of things so that you can maintain everything you, you want to offer to kids in this district. He gets a good question award for the board. And I appreciate that.
He's the, he's the reigning champion.
I agree with that. I don't, I don't like to say that. I gave one the other night and I just had to, it was cricket. So like, is that under there? And that was via Zoom, so it was really awkward.
But, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say hang around, he's not down.
But before segueing into our next agenda item and thanking Darren for being here, I, I do think what Darren said about undecideds is very valuable. And I also think that when we talk about the next agenda item and we're able to talk about some of the differences of the projections that we had in the survey, which were done, the survey had to be put together before we do a lot of our financial information. New information that we've learned, you know, with our budget being set at the end of October and now with revenue estimates coming out really today, you know, we can give our community even a better idea. And I think that might have an impact on the undecideds as well. But we'll talk about that more in the next agenda item. But Darren, you know, certainly on behalf of the board and behalf of the district, thank you for coming. Thank you for your work. And board members, any last questions?
So when did you graduate from staff?
Summer, summer of '94. And then I went down to Slinger, Wisconsin.
Because I finished mine in '96.
And before I go, I did want to just say, I can't give Joe enough credit. We needed to put this together very quickly on your behalf once the financial situation became crystal clear that you, you needed to ask this question. He worked tirelessly. I mean, I, I was kind of a taskmaster as far as what I needed from him in order to write this survey that quickly. And he managed everything I needed with this together for you. So I appreciate working with Joe. So you did a great job.
Well, thank you. Leah's the one that did all the work. Thank you.
Nice job, Leah.
I fixed a lot doing for the community. Okay. So moving on, our next agenda item is discussion of a possible ballot question and referendum resolution. See a lot of background materials, just make sure everyone noticed a few things were added today in case we needed to refresh things in Board docs. But do you want to put that off here?
Sure. I can try to do a real brief overview. I really want to get to a board discussion, board questions, but just a few things. Okay. First, first of all, and this is very timely, a report came out from Forward Analytics about K-12 education on the ballot. That was the name of the report, using referendum to fund public schools. And it's really interesting how this information's coming out just at the time that we are looking at this. And it talks about how so many schools now are having to go to referendum. And when, when you look at that, the funding has increased from $32 million in 2000, the year 2000, to $180 million in 2010 and $650 million in 2023. So what's happening here in Menominee is not unique. And I think board members already know that, but I'm not sure that our community does. This is not a matter of mismanagement. This is not a matter of something not going right in the school district. This is a matter of how districts are being funded and the need for additional revenue due to the revenue limits being set at where they're at. In terms of our local information though, we do work with Corals and Grady. They are a legal firm that specializes in writing resolutions and writing ballot questions. So for the board, we have a ballot question available for a $4.2 million recurring referendum, which is exactly what was on the survey, except it's the legal definition and actually what you would see on the ballot. With the state aid estimates that just came out today, and they are estimates, I want to make sure we understand that we can't take that to the bank and 100% think that they're going to be right on the money. But, but the fact is, is that the estimates have really changed the perspective of what the impact this referendum would be. So when we look at the $4.2 million referendum, on the survey, we were talking about it costing a dollar 25 per thousand evaluation. And that's not the case anymore. Actually, the survey, or I'm sorry, the aid estimates really dropped the mil rate in terms of what we would be looking at. Our mil rate right now is $5.69. That, that's actually very close to what we had in the survey. But instead of going above $7, you can see that it would, it would go to $6.51 on the mil rate. And that's a significant change. With that, the estimated school tax increase would be $82 per $100,000 valuation in 2024, 2025, and an additional $2 the following year in 2025, 2026. It was going to be $125 in the survey. So it's, it's not half of that, but it's significantly less. So I think the affordability concern, I mean, obviously affordability is always a concern, but I really think that that's a big difference going from $125 for $100,000 valuation down to $82. We also have prepared a option for the board to consider in terms of a stacked referendum where, you know, we would use fund balance the first year and split the referendum in half and ease into it a little bit more. Certainly that's an option the board could consider, especially if affordability was the concern. I know we have heard from some constituents of our fund balance and I think I explained it pretty well on Monday night, how important the fund balance is for cash flow purposes. Leah and I have spent time since Monday looking at our, our fund balance and the cash flow needs of the school district. I do think it is possible if that was a route the board wanted to do. Frankly, I was, I was kind of leaning towards that way when I, when I was looking at the affordability and the potential of it being $125 per $100,000. and the potential of it being $125 per $100,000. But now with these updated aid estimates, I really think that this is much more affordable than the original survey, and I think, while the stacked referendum is an option, it can cause confusion with voters, and it would deplete our fund balance by 2.1 million. So I think perhaps the original plan of the 4.2 million might be something that the board would want to consider. But at that point, or at this point, I should say, I guess it's opened up for board questions, comments, board members, if you want to share maybe what you're feeling about it. I guess, Rachel, over, you want to lead the discussion?
Yeah, I appreciate that summary, and it is good news that we are sort of in any scenario looking at hopefully a more affordable proposal to voters, but I guess I'll just open it up for anyone who has questions.
In relation to a stacked, and I agree, I think a stacked option is going to be confusing to some of the public, because even the initial wording that was put out confused some folks on social media about thinking that it would go up $4 million every year rather than being former, you know, in state. So to get to a stacked, we would be spending down some fund balance, and I don't know, let's call it the industry standard in schools or education, I know in a hospital we'd talk about base cash on hand to cover payroll, and it's the same thing, but is there a minimum? How do schools say we really shouldn't go below X, and how close are we to X if we do a stacked option?
Well, and I'll let Leah add to this, but, you know, we do have the board policy that talks about the fund balance, and Leah could probably cite that better than I can, but what we do, what Leah does is she calculates, she makes a calculation every year to see where our fund balance is at as compared to that board policy. The key is that we want to make sure we have enough funding on hand because we do not receive our revenue monthly. We receive our revenue in different, various chunks throughout the year, based on timing of tax payments, based on the state distribution of equalized aid. But Leah, could you maybe speak, speak to that, grab the microphone and just speak to a little bit more about what the fund balance expectations are for our district?
Sure. There really is no magic number or percentage, it's just whatever percentage meets your cash flow or means, you know. I think at this point, our fund balance is such that we have enough in there that this referendum spending roughly $2 million out of it the first year would not be enough to cause us to have to short-term barrel or get a line of credit at this point.
It wouldn't tip us over, but how close would we be getting?
We would have a couple more million to go, I would say.
Just for reference, the board policy that Joe mentioned is 610.
Do I have a copy of the fund balance currently around 14-ish?
16.
16. So if you think, so it sounds like somewhere in the ballpark of around, you know, four to five, you feel like, so that's when you're scraping the bottom, which to me implies that actually, you know, that 16, most of that is being spent down, replenished throughout the year, over the course of the year. And so it's not like it's a fixed balance, like was maybe suggested by some people a while ago, it's that this is a rolling account, which has always got things coming and going from it, and that's the end of the balance, but that's going to be used, right? It's not just sitting there.
Correct.
And one of the reasons why it's hard for us to tell you an exact number is because that target changes. You know, in the board policy, it talks about a minimum unassigned fund balance, and that's another point that needs to be brought up. We have the assigned portion of our fund balance and the unassigned, the assigned portion cannot be used for anything other than what it's designated for. And with us being a self-insured health insurance school district, you know, that's a pretty big chunk of the fund balance in terms of being assigned towards medical insurance needs. But what the policy says is that it's the goal of the district to achieve and maintain an unassigned fund balance in the general fund equal to the taxes receivable a year at plus 10% of budgeted expenses for the next fiscal year. So when we talk about 10% of budgeted expenses, and then when we consider what inflation has done the last couple of years, the need in terms of minimum fund balance has changed quite a bit, and it does change from the earlier based on inflation and based on the expenses in the school district. So, well, like Leah said, could we swing it and still maintain enough in our fund balance to have positive cash flow? We think we could in a stacked referendum scenario, but I do think it could put us in jeopardy of meeting that board goal of the minimum fund balance, unassigned fund balance amount.
I think your response and your comment, the question to it, is incredibly helpful. I'm sitting here thinking, well, the fund balance really is like lake milk. It's got stuff in it all the time, it's coming in, it's coming out, and it has to be there to be a lake, right? I mean, it's pretty, well, we're not going to take it to the stinks part, but that is very different than a lot of people think, that you're just sitting on this cash like screws in duck, and that's not the case.
On the question of affordability, I was really curious about that question when Joe posted these numbers. So what I ended up doing is I called up, and I know we talked about, you know, what's the reassessment schedule, you know, what's the reassessment around the district? So I talked with the city council member today, and also I actually called up the city assessor, the person in the city council for assessment to say, so like, when do assessments happen? What was the effect? And yeah, I mean, and those are, I don't live in the city of Monomani, so for years isn't as personalized, I live in the town of Monomani, but yeah, you know, around a year ago, right, there was a reassessment of the entire city of Monomani. A lot of people's property values did on paper, you know, get really cranked up, and that's because they hadn't done it, I think the assessor's had for 17 years because of a whole sequence of events financially. Yeah, 2009 is the last one, now it's 2022 effectively. Now, those, that new, those new assessments have been in place now for a full year, so it's not like they're changing this, you know, this New Year's. But there are people who had a, you know, a pretty big shock around a year and a half ago, in addition to everything else you've experienced in the last several years. So I think affordability is a really real question. At the same time, I think, you know, what you said, Joe, about the new estimates coming in are very encouraging, that this is actually going to be less of a, no matter what, you know, in both these options, less of an impact than you might have feared on taxpayers. So the other thing I learned in that discussion was I believe that there, you know, there may be assessments somewhere, you know, maybe five, six, seven years down the line, it's not going to be next year, year after year for that, right? So, you know, I think as we think about the district not only as an educational entity but as a, you know, taxing entity, that kind of understanding and coordination with the towns and the cities and the counties is really important to understand how it goes going. And I can just say the county announced their tax rates for the coming year. So there's a lot of things to keep in mind. I am encouraged that both these options look, I mean, it's cashed out people's pockets, right, but it is remarkably affordable for the municipal level of district.
To your point a little bit about the reassessments, you know, when we look at our graphs of our mill rate, you can see that the mill rate has really plummeted, and Monomani's not the only school district that sees this. In 2013, 2014, the school mill rate was $10.66. This year, it is down to $5.69, so almost a $5 drop in the mill rate. And some people, you know, we've heard some public comments, you know, that they're concerned, you know, if we use mill rate as one of our indicators for whether or not it's affordable, because there's two, really two main reasons why the mill rate has dropped. One is the increase in property valuation, and in that respect, it's really not, it's really not making school more affordable because as people's property is more valued and their taxes go up, mill rate goes down. It really involves what's coming out of their pockets. But the second piece really is critical, and that's state aid. And whether you like it or not, how the state has handled education over the last decade, one of the things that they have done is they have pumped more and more revenue into the state aid formula. Now, part of the reason why we're sitting in this position, much of that revenue for schools, as it was called, was not spendable for schools. Essentially, it was being used through the school formula to provide property tax relief. And in that case, it has become more affordable as the state has continued to put more dollars into the revenue, the state aid formula, not the revenue limit formula. So when we talked about Monomani having a very high change in valuation, our whole school district was about 16%, that's a big part of why the mill rate dropped. But now when we look at these state aid estimates and what state aid we could qualify for in our school district, as more state aid comes in, that is more funding coming from the state, less being put on the local property taxpayer, and when that's used to drive the mill rates down, that is a savings for our taxpayers. So while inflation has played a hand in this, the state aid really has as well. So I do think that when people look at mill rate, I do think it is a viable measure that we need to consider, because property is different throughout the school district, and without looking at mill rate, it's very, very difficult for any individual taxpayer to actually figure out how it would impact their own pocket.
I have a question about the difference in the questions. So if we do the stacked, and it's 2.1 and then 2.1 to get to the 4.2, does that affect the mill rate or what they pay for taxes from one year to the next without having the $4.2 million all at once?
If the board chooses to do a stacked referendum, essentially, the first year, we would take half of the needed revenue out of fund balance. So only 2.1 million would go on to the tax roll instead of 4.2. And that's what we were talking about with whether or not it's wise to deplete that fund balance, because it's very hard to increase fund balance because essentially you lose state aid the next year, because state aid is dependent on costs.
Enrollment.
Well, it's not enrollment, but a lot of it's on cost and how much you spend. Leah, I'm missing the term, what do you call that? Something that qualifies for state aid, has to be a qualified expense?
The shared cost.
Shared cost, thank you. So if we put money into fund balance, we're losing out on the shared cost from that year, and that's why we use Fund 46, because when we make a contribution to Fund 46, that is considered a shared cost and helps us maintain our state aid. We've done a really good job with our contributions to Fund 73 and Fund 46 instead of building fund balance, because we still are able to capture state aid on that, which makes schools more affordable for our taxpayers. But to your question on the stacked referendum, it would be 2.1 million on the tax roll the first year and then bump up to 4.2 the second year, so it would ease it in a little bit. Ultimately, we would end up at the same rate moving forward, but we are running a risk by doing that because we'd be depleting fund balance.
But for the taxpayer, it would help them if you ease into it, because perhaps they could save or put more money aside, you know, for the property taxes when they go up the numbers. If they're a minimal the first year and then they jump again in the second year, there might be a chance for, you know, if you're looking at the taxpayer, they might have a chance to budget better, I don't know.
Is that, these numbers here, Joe, that are? Yes, yes. So in the, in the $4.2 million referendum, the increase the first year would be $82 per $100,000 valuation, and then followed up with a $2 increase per $100,000 the next year.
If you remember seeing that.
In the stacked option, it would be $13 estimated in the first year, but then it would bump up to 71 in the second year. So, you know, it does make it more affordable in the first year, but then you have that bump in the second year, and we're depleting fund balance. So again, I think either option, you know, can be a decent option, but now that, again, the affordability of the 4.2 has gotten under $100, I think it makes more sense.
Also, I think when you send the information out to the public about, you know, the estimates and, you know, being lower than what we thought for, you know, the tax for like the $82 per $100,000 property value or whatever, I think that might change people's minds too from the undecided part, because that might make them think, oh, it's not quite as much, you know, it was another, I guess, idea in the heads that could change, you know, something, you know, in that respect. So as soon as you get the information out, and we, after we get a resolution, I think that would be really important.
Absolutely, and that's why I'm so excited about it, because, you know, in talking with Darren, had the survey results come back in the low 40s or below, that's a clear signal to the board that what we asked in the survey is not affordable and not supported by the community, so then the next step would be is how do you make it more affordable? Well, with the state aid estimates, it made it more affordable without us having to change the number, which is a really nice, nice thing in terms of timing for us. We didn't have to do that to make it more affordable, but I agree with you, Amy, I think when people see, I just want to make sure I say the correct number here, when people see $82 instead of $125 for $100,000, that's a big difference, and I do think that'll swing some goals.
Just want to mention, Angie, if you have anything to say, make sure you, don't pay any time.
I don't have any.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
Sorry to make sure you have a chance.
So.
No, I'm empowered.
Thanks.
So obviously, this is not on an action agenda tonight, we're not asking the board to vote on anything tonight. This will come back the fourth Monday of November on the action agenda for the board. And a couple things, even though you're not voting tonight, it would be nice if you, as board members, could at least, you know, kind of say how you're feeling at this point, because there is work to be done in terms of drafting a resolution for that next meeting, and, you know, if we know where the, what kind of resolution the board would like drafted up, that's very helpful. The other thing to consider with the stacked referendum is that I do think it causes confusion. I've been working with that attorney, and you board members know in terms of the background I've shared with you, you know, that stacked question has already been modified about three times to try to make it more understandable, meet all the legal parameters, and I would hate to see people either, A, well, whether they vote yes or no, I hate to see people voting for something that they don't quite understand what they're voting for, and I would hate the idea of there being misconceptions. You know, Carl alluded to the fact that even with the survey, and, you know, some people, this referendum for operating is brand new to Monomani really, when you consider it, you know, some people thought it was going to be 4.2 million the first year and then 8.4 million the next year, and then 12.6 million the next year, and keep building by 4.2 every single year. That is not the case, but those are the kind of misconceptions that can really sink this thing and can cause mistrust with the board, which is another reason why I think, you know, unless the stacked referendum was really preferred, avoiding that confusion is something we should consider.
So I think what you're asking is, which one would we prefer?
I really feel that that stacked referendum was really confusing, I didn't like it at all. At first, you know, I thought maybe it would be nice to kind of see it as a compromise, you know, beat the taxpayers halfway, and maybe that would really get a lot of those undecided voters, but with the new information that came out today, I think that that is the compromise. I think it's much more straightforward and allows us to have some flexibility and some cushion, and we don't, and as we give the information out to the public, we can make the point, I think, that we don't necessarily have to spend $4.2 million. You know, we've been frugal in the past, and we will continue to be frugal.
And that's a very good point, Dale, and I think that needs to be emphasized, is that, one, the board sets the levy every single year, and just because there's a revenue limit, the board would not have to levy up to the revenue limit, and even with a referendum that allows for exceeding the revenue limit, each year the board does not have to levy to that amount. Another piece to think about is that our school district really is a leader in the state in terms of what we've done in using our resources wisely, not, you know, spending things on frills or consumable things that some other districts are. Two really good examples. Two really good examples of that are what we've done with Fund 73. Fund 73 has to do with post-employment benefits. Schools across Wisconsin had unfunded liabilities based on, you know, how things changed with the law and how things changed with budgeting requirements. Well, for, at one point, Menominee had about a $30 million unfunded liability. And Menominee now essentially has a fully funded plan. And all post-employment benefits from anybody hired in the last decade plus are all predetermined and funded as we go. We're not stacking up unfunded liability. The other pieces with our capital maintenance fund and capital improvement fund, what we've been able to do with that, capturing state aid through the shared expenses and not taking those dollars and spending them if we, if we don't need them and allowing us to essentially avoid a future building referendum if we keep our same footprint, you know, that's something that's amazing. A lot of districts, what they do is they defer all their maintenance and then they wait until things are in shambles and then they tell the community, you know, we need, you know, $25 million to renovate our schools or something. You know, with what we've done with our capital improvement plan, we're able to take care of doors and windows and HVAC systems and roofs and all that stuff. That's all planned out for 30 years. And this referendum would help us continue to do that. So, yeah, I think your point's very well taken, Dale, that, one, the board does not have to levy for it. And two, even if the board does, it doesn't have to be spent. The board still sets the budget. It doesn't necessarily have to be spent. It can be put into a trust such as the capital improvement trust.
Since I've been deemed the champion of questions, I'll leave you two more. So are there any, so these are the estimates that came in from Baird in the State DBI like today. Are there any numbers that could change between now and the 27th? Or is it all, I mean, in terms of like the state aid, the different formulas you're going to use to like, you know, like this, these numbers, I see the 653, the, you know, and that, that $82, are those now down to, you know, to just within a dollar or is there still a possibility of something else coming in that's going to change those?
I'm going to defer to Leah in just a second. We're kind of looking at each other. I think, well, first of all, I can tell you, these numbers will change. They'll change every year and, you know, third Friday enrollment and what the actual valuation is. I know that's not the question you're answering, but I do think it's very important that everyone understands, we are basing this decision based on projections and the best projections that we can. The projections got a lot more clear today when we received the aid estimates from Baird, but those aid estimates, they can swing a lot as well. I would think that a lot of them will swing down, especially with us being a low revenue district and having the ceiling move up. I think the low revenue districts are going to see more aid. So I would hope that this is a ceiling or, yeah, a floor, not a ceiling. But Leah, do you have anything to add on that?
Yep, I was just going to say, as districts around the state now submit their budgets for this year, Baird bases their estimates off of those budgeted numbers for the aid purpose. So I believe the end of November or December 1st is when the budget is due. And so again, they'll put out another estimate at that time. I don't know if we'll get it in time of the next board meeting, but probably after.
I'd imagine, or hopefully our comments aren't working over these things. And then my, my final round of questions is, so in the case of this stack, you know, I guess what, I'm not quite sure if this is a question, but what, in addition to everything that Dale said, which I agree with entirely, is having that dip in the fund balance in a situation where, where we know you're facing a cash trap situation potentially, I guess I wonder how risky that seems in, in the event of the unexpected, right? If there is something like, you know, part of a building suddenly needs structural repair that we didn't anticipate or something happens involving, that's going to involve costs to remediate. You know, the fund balance is primarily for the purpose of rolling these accounts, but I imagine in, you know, in an unexpected situation, in which there always are, that fund balance would still be something we'd have to think about how that might even be used. And I guess I wonder how risky it feels to, to, you know, take that number even lower if it's, if, you know, we're already worried about kind of the 2024 kind of cash flow by the end of the year.
A couple of comments I would say on that is, I think that's a really good thought and something that needs to be considered carefully. I am proud of the fact that I think our district is in a better position than most. One, because we have the capital improvement fund. So if we have a boiler die or we have a roof fail, we do have funds that have been set aside that could hold over for a bit. It probably would require the deferral of things down the line, but I think we're in a better position than most when it comes to that. We also have very good insurances that we continue to hold in the event that we have a liability situation. But, and our technology department has done a terrific job in terms of technology, technology security, you know, with these ransom attacks and things like that. Again, we have insurance and we have those systems in place, but schools are becoming a larger and larger target for those types of things as well. So I do think it's very important to have a suitable fund balance. And again, the other piece is it's so hard to build it up because you're losing state aid. It really is a sacrifice to build fund balance. So, but in terms of our exposure, I feel pretty good about where we're at exposure-wise. My instinct is, again, avoid the, avoid the stack. I think it's too complicated. I don't think it's worth tapping into the fund balance. You know, worst case, the fund balance goes low, then we have to borrow and now we're paying money to replace money we had in our hands and then we decided to use it. So that doesn't make any sense to me. I think the recurring language, we haven't talked much about that, right? There've been an issue, well, should we recur or not recur on it? We've heard community members make statements, some say, well, maybe a 10-year. Well, when you, when you think about a fixed amount and the effects of inflation, by the time we hit 10 or 15 years, it's old, it may, you know, recurring is not going to be a financial burden 20 years from now at $4 million. Right? We'll look back and go, boy, that was, that was nothing compared to today's dollars in 2044, whatever. So I think the risk there is low, but if we don't go recurring, the risk is, you know, picking a shorter time and then we fall short. We can't predict what state funding is going to look like in two years, four years, six years. So the recurring gives us that stability and all the things that were said about not having to spend it if it's, if it's there. Language-wise, because what you're asking is where are we leaning on this so that we can repair the language and then have further discussion next time? And all the best messaging, lots of work to do with messaging if whatever happens. We're not going to decide that tonight. And, but I did see in those draft questions, I did like some of the language that was part of the recurring one.
The stack.
The, or stacked, I'm sorry, yeah, stacked. For a total of 4.2 million and to remain at that amount for the 2025, 26. If that language can be applied to just the regular recurring single issue, I think that's more clear to say $4.2 million for the 23, 24 school year and thereafter for recurring purposes. I think that reads more cleanly or more clearly to me as a, as a reader than the other language that was on, that was on here.
Sorry, Carl, which version are you looking at?
Finally, it was 24 referendum sample ballot. And it says option one at the very top. And so whereas the individual, you know, the non-stacked says 4.2 beginning 24, 25 for recurring purposes consisting of operational expenses, the stacked one includes that language that says, and to remain at that amount. And that piece to me resonates. Yeah.
I think you need to be cautious and you probably want to talk to the legal counsel because that could be interpreted as adding it on the 4.1 every year, turning it into 8.2 and so on and so forth. So you really need to be.
For a total of, yeah, I mean, the lawyers would, yeah. I'm, I'm not the lawyer and they'd have to decide it, but something like that feels more clear to me that I'm one guy.
Is the clause of thereafter basically that is the, so the stack that describes stepping up and then is fixed thereafter?
I don't have that in, first of all.
No? So in option two?
Yeah, I know.
Well, you get the idea. I mean, they'll look at the question. You get it. Go ahead, me, Joe, Ray. Uh, yes, but like Leah said, I think there's some very specific language that, that bonded to her, the attorneys use for these types of questions. If nothing else in the educational piece, I think it would be very important that we cover that. It's that same issue of 2.4, 4.8.
Yeah, I mean, that's the biggest challenge, right? Is there's a very, very specific legal guidance on how we can write for these ballots. We can't, we can't do much, unfortunately.
Where we can do more is in the website that we have where there can even be examples. You say, okay, your house is valued at this, it will cost this much extra this year, this much extra the following year. We. Also public forums to make sure that people understand that the protections have gone down and are, you know, and so forth, like all of that, you know, I mean, in multiple ways because that's the only way people are going to, going to get it. That's my, my opinion.
Well, I tried it also, but I remember. And, and one of the ways I think is visually, I, I tried to put together graphs this afternoon based on the new information for the board to preview and any feedback that you might have before the next meeting. But I think that's another reason why going out two years on that graph as opposed to the referendum survey only went out one year, you know, you can kind of see in the graph how the mill rate levels, I think that might help people understand as well.
I suppose there's a danger if we went out more than two years, I mean, anything could happen that's outside of our control when it comes to property taxes and assessments, right? But I think our projections inaccurate.
Yes, and that's a good point. And Carl alluded to that too, is that, you know, while we think we're taking our best guess that this is going to put our district in a very stable position for the foreseeable future, we don't know what inflation's going to do. And the biggest wild card is, is the state going to get back to the policy of increasing revenue limits indexed to inflation? If they do, this referendum, if passed, would keep the school district in a stable financial position for a long time. But we, we don't know that. We know what next year's state budget's going to be, but beyond that, if the legislature does not fund schools in inflation and if inflation was to stay higher, go high again, you know, there's nothing saying that this isn't going to be an issue for schools in the future. But from what we know today and what we can predict into the future, this really makes it a more stable situation to be able to provide all the services that people have come to expect in our schools.
I would say the help for the future vote.
It was a good point that Darren made earlier too, when he talked about the governor sort of making this all we funded the school for 400 years. Well, that could all be undone in the next two-year budget. So there, there are people who maybe feel like school funding has become stable for poor centuries, but we all know that the next legislature in two years could do anything else.
We're already trying to, you know, take that out of the charges.
You're the one not using your microphone.
Just now, yes, but I've been using it all along until just then.
And to be clear, this fixes the problem that occurred with not funding, not keeping the revenue limits indexed with inflation. It fills the fiscal cliff that we had with the federal funding in COVID. It fixes all the stuff in the past. And because this is the first year of the ban, you know, we can factor in that, that revenue limit increase for next year. But to Rachel's point, if all of a sudden the revenue limits are frozen again at zero, I mean, this is not, this is not going to keep Menominee funded very long. I don't think it's going to be zero. I think, you know, there's bipartisan support for funding our schools, even though there's a big divide in, in what that number, what order should be. But this puts us in a much, much more stable position for the future.
So a couple of people have spoken, you know, against the idea of the stack government. Is anyone else who wants to make sure their voice is heard when it comes to the two options that are before us or something else altogether?
Well, Bill, I agree with Dale and Carl. I'm not in favor of the stack, especially with the information we, you know, just got today, not only from the survey, but the information that Joe sent out. I think it's, I think the other option's much better.
I agree. I agree, Joe.
Just to clarify, we are not voting.
I agree, Teal, though my, my perspective is actually from the affordability planning part. For me, like I pay my property tax even two installments off and on the day it is due. And cutting it pretty close, it's easier to know what it's going to be a few years out rather than knowing it jumps this year, it'll jump again next year. So I, I would rather just, just know.
For the record, I would love to also have 4 million exponentially growing to 70, however, I do think it might be better not to do that.
So what I'm hearing then, Rachel, and please, board members, correct me if I did not hear this correctly, is that the board would like me to work with the attorney to draft up a final question and resolution based on a recurring 4.2 million, $4.2 million referendum for our school district? Anybody not want that done?
I would agree with that. I definitely would trust and respect your, and your judgment on the budget. I think you guys have done a very responsible job and knowing that we don't have to take the whole $4.2 million, but that if we would need it, we could, we could. I, I'm in agreement with, with Mark and Carl and, and what they said and, I, I agree with what you said also. I would support that.
Thank you, Angie.
It's really nice to be in the arena. Any final thoughts on this agenda item? Before we move on. So items related to next meeting dates, board committee reports. I feel like I just read these. November 20th to 24th, no school. 27th, we have a special board meeting here at 5:45. In December, the 4th is the QIC committee meeting, 3:50 PM here. A regular board meeting at 5 on December 11th. It's still, no, it's not here. The 18th, December 18th, we have a diversity committee meeting and there is not a special board meeting in December. We're just not meeting on Christmas Day.
Why is that Christmas Day?
It's, it's wrong. Christmas Day is Monday. It's just a title.
I know.
Okay. Carl?
I believe right now there is bingo going on at Stavia House as a fundraiser for special education, field trips and such. So that's where I'm going next.
I don't know for Carl, but it's very, it's very crowded.
Hey, so I heard there's no seats available, but I'm sure you all can stand.
It sounds like a lot of fun, but no seats available is good news, first of all. And maybe we all can find other ways to go.
I was just going to say, Carl, I'll give you some money.
Yeah, well, okay, before we break down, let's entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, let's get to it.
Hi, Angie. Thank you.
See if I hang it up.
Appreciate, um, warning.
See you, Rob.